I'm calling a meeting of Lawrence County Council. The order, this is our April 14th, 2015 meeting, tonight. Council and bids that has our application and then we'll say our pledge of allegiance. We'll ask everyone to.
That's correct. Dear Heavenly Father, thank you for this time to come together in the midst of Lawrence County. I'd like to take this opportunity to thank you. Thank you for all the employees. Thank you for those serving the law enforcement and emergency personnel, both here, at home, and abroad, so that we may have freedom to assemble tonight. I thank you. Be with us as we deliberate the business of Lawrence County. In your precious name I pray. Amen.
Lay the leg and sit the floor. United States of America, to the Republic of which you stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good to see a good crowd tonight. We've got a pretty long meeting tonight. Y'all just have to bear with us. But start with, we'll have approval of our agenda for April 14th, 2015. We have a motion.
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman. We have a motion. Please.
Got a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Got a motion in the second. I'd like to add one legal briefing, so that might be two legal briefings tonight instead of one. We've got four matters in, as I said, from two performing matters, two legal briefings, one of not, so there'll be five. Call vote, show your right hand. Six, five, one, five, zero. Six, zero, not five.
Yeah, I'm up, yeah, I'm up.
Right. I asked for approval of the minutes for March 24th, 2015 victims.
I make a motion to approve the minutes from March 24th, Mr. Chairman.
Got a motion in our second.
Second.
Got a motion in the second. If there's no correction, let everybody raise your right hand. Nothing I can do. First thing on our agenda tonight is Connect Lake Greenwood, Mr. Jimmy Baden, Chairman. Do you'd like to come forward?
Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen. We just want to take a couple of minutes and update you. I don't know if you're familiar with the organization, it's a joint venture with the chambers that was organized about a year ago. We wanted to make you aware that we've presented the same information to Greenwood and also scheduled for Newberry, so you can tell what's going on for the lake. What is Connect Lake Greenwood? We're a joint venture with Greenwood, Lawrence, Newberry, and ninety-six chambers of commerce. With me tonight is Angel LaBord, the CEO of Greenwood. Greg was supposed to be here, but I don't think he's gotten here yet. But we're working together with all the chambers to better the lake. It started with just a dream, a small group of people who came together to enhance and help the lake. Today, it seems like we're the two to go to group for the lake, and it's grown to a great group of community leaders that we'll share some of those with you here soon. Some of our highlights, we've developed a website that's now reached number one on Google. So far, we've had about sixty-five thousand visitors reach that. We have a database that we're collecting, so we get regular newsletters out for people that use the lake, live on the lake. We've launched a survey last year, kind of working with the master plan prior to them coming about, that asked a lot of questions, and that provided some tremendous input as to what people want to see happen on the lake or about the lake. You may, I hope you've heard about Blacks on the Lake, that's our inaugural event in 2014. We had, we didn't have a clue whether we had several hundred people there, several thousand, even ten thousand people, and was really overwhelmed, and that showed the interest of how much is on the lake and what can be done. That really was word of mouth. We hardly do any promotion at all for that, so tremendous success. That was done at Camp Fellowship last year, and planning again for the fourth of this year. We've had several well-attended lake information sessions, just telling them what's going on about Lake Greenwood. Our steering committee, so as you know, it's pretty diverse. Jim Medford, Stoney Point, Tony, who works with real estate, McGuggles and Guggles Marine, Michael Hobby, Moons Landing, who works with the Lawrence Chamber, Jeff from Lawrence Water and Sewer, Sharon Clark, Crystal Bay in the Lawrence area, Steve Fenimore in Grand Harbor, Chris B. Rush, Kevin Cartier is the Fellowship, Camping Conference, all the reps from all the chambers, the four chambers, and Suzanne Lee, Liz Barquille, myself, I'm the chairman. So it gives a pretty diverse group, representing all the counties. Our action plan is we want to offer lake views and updates, really kind of be the hub for people to go to, find out what's going on in Lake Greenwood. We've got a calendar of events on the website, it's pretty extensive so far, continues to grow. It seems like when we started, the left hand wasn't talking to the right hand, so we've kind of the ones that put that together, worked very well. We want to promote the lake locally, regionally, and nationally to the audience as far as development, housing, stuff like that, and we've done tremendous strides on that, and it's come along. We're doing some videos, working with tourism, and some other things that I'll speak to you about. We work with organizations like the Lake Greenwood Cleanup. We continue to build a stakeholder database for residents and lake users, visitors and recreational users. We've established a partnership with all the lake businesses, most of those on the Lawrence side, and the neighborhoods on the lake, and created representative in each one, so we have a voice of those people on the lake. And we're obviously utilizing the website and social media to promote the lake, and as I said, we're number one search right now on Google, and same thing on Facebook and Twitter. We have coming up a May music and fireworks, that's going to be held in conjunction with the Symmetric Golf Tour on Saturday night, May the ninth. It's a band and fireworks on the lake, whole thirteen. Lights on the Lake, obviously, that'll be July the fourth, 2015. We're expecting at least the crowd we had last year, or more. We fit them on the lake, I'm quite sure how we're going to fit them on land, but we'll get them in. And then we're doing Labor Day music and fireworks, bringing back the flotilla. I'm not sure if any of you are lake familiar or not, but there used to be a flotilla that everybody talked about, was, didn't participate, but I understand it's great. We're putting safety lights on the bridges. These aren't spotlights, but they're just like solar lights, so that people can see. You know, it's been in the past, I know it's been killed on hitting a bridge before, so we're doing that, got that approved, working with railroads and park transportation, and that'll be going up this month. We've offered boat repair safety classes for people. We also do supportive events, something that we may not host specifically, but we sponsor and help other organizations do it, like a cook-off, Easter sunrise service at the Camp Fellowship service, several fishing tournaments, the cropper tournament that just came in, we helped them, shrine poker runs, the Lake Greenwood Cleanup, Burton Center does a poker run also. I think they had to change the name to Poker Run, it's got to be something else now, can't use the word poker and raising funds at the same time for some reason. So they ride around in boats, draw cards. We'll do a boat show, and then there's Blue Way events also, we're working with Greenwood Lake Management. I'm assuming you guys may have heard of this, the South Carolina National Heritage Corridor is working to promote Lake Greenwood, it's well on its way. They're doing, they'll be doing some advertisements, and they've already established some plans, and there's a lot of positive things coming there to get Lake Greenwood on the map, both regionally and hopefully nationally. So that's coming down the pike, and that's working very well. We're working very close with them to do that. Our projected expenses is very minimal, but we're working off a shoestring budget, and we've been able to pull it off, so that's what our budget is for the 2015 year. And what we have come to you and requesting is two things for consideration, is one, just request, again, a sheriff deputy at Lights on the Lake. Great event last year, we didn't have a single bit of problem, but it's always there in our presence, so there's safety there in case somebody does drink a little bit before they do too. And we'd like you to consider a thousand dollars toward CLG for the 2015, the stuff we're doing. We feel like we've done a tremendous amount for the lake, and we'll continue to grow. We've got a great community support, doing a lot of things. Any questions? Thank you very much for your time. Appreciate it.
Appreciate it. We're going to take the funding request as information on that.
Yes, sir. Absolutely. Thank you very much. Considerate.
The next thing on our agenda tonight is Upper Savannah Workforce, Boston Area Designation Division, and Consortium, right? The Savannah Council.
Chairman Wood, and members of County Council, thank you so much for letting me be with you here this evening. That sounded like a lot to consider, but I'll try to explain it as to what's going on with our workforce system. As you know, I work with Upper Savannah Council Governments, I'm their workforce development administrator for the seven county region that includes Abingfield, Edgfield, Greenwood, Lawrence, McCormick, Newberry, and Saluda. Our mission is to work with both employers and job seekers through our SC work system to match the needs of employers with those looking for work. Recently, as, as a matter of fact, July of 2014, we had new legislation that was passed at the federal level that will replace the legislation that we're working under currently, and it is called the Workforce Innovation and Opportunity Act. Right now, we're working off of proposed regulations, but since the act does go into effect July one, we have to have new agreements among our seven counties to act as a region, and also to designate Upper Savannah as a fiscal and administrative entity to operate our SC work centers and provide services to employers and job seekers. We are excited, of course, to be in Lawrence County. I would like to tell you that the last time I was here, we were talking about our partnership that we have now with the Lawrence County Library. That partnership has been great. I got some numbers from Ann before our meeting, and they've seen an increase in the number of people walking into the doors at the library. Anyone who comes in that's one of our customers, we also require that they get a library card, because we want them to be exposed to the library and what they have to offer. Our numbers have also increased, because a lot of the customers that we're working with are also customers in need of work and looking for work. So again, I'm glad to answer any questions about the agreement, and clarify anything that you might need more information of.
Sandy, you need to approve the agreement, is that what you're looking for?
Please, yeah, just so we can get the chairman's signature. All the chairmen have had to sign the agreement. Right now, we've had five, and well, today it'll be five, we've got two more county council meetings to go to in the next couple of weeks.
And I think this program works to locally, through the Chamber of Commerce and other things.
We work a lot with our economic developers, our chambers, other state agencies, vocational rehabilitation, Department of Workforce, other people in the communities like Goodwill, so it's a good mixture of people who work with people looking for work. We also work a lot, of course, with the employers, programs that we offer to offer existing employers grants, and then we provide a lot of job fairs. And I did want to mention to you, the Upper Savannah Job Fair is coming up at Greenwood Mall next Wednesday from ten to three. We have sixty-two employers who are registered to attend, all of them are hiring, and we added up the numbers today, we have over twelve hundred jobs that are available at our job fair. So anything you could do, I know Diane, you always do a good job, and others in your districts are letting your constituents know what's going on. I have some flyers for y'all after the meeting, and anything you can do to help us spread the word, we really appreciate it.
Mr. Chairman, I think the motion, we all approve this. I think we're all, if you need your signature, we'll be going before we leave, I guess, don't you?
If possible, that would be great.
Do I have any other questions? We'd be glad to. If you should be glad to respond.
I've got a quick question.
Sure.
If you could briefly, just tell me how the operation is funded.
It is a federally funded program. It was called the Workforce Investment Act, and now it's the, will be the Workforce Innovation and Opportunity Act. We also get state funding for, from special appropriations. We have funds available to serve, and work with companies that are laid off from their jobs due to plant closings, and we work with those individuals to help them find other jobs. Okay.
Thank you. Any other question? Mr. Cruz, Chance, if you've reviewed the document.
I saw it this morning, but I had not thoroughly reviewed it, but it's pretty standard, from what I understand.
I would like Mr. Cruz, Chance, to review this document before we put it up for motion.
Sure. And I'll be glad to give you a copy of the previous document, it's very, it's.
Is anything muted? I mean, is this just?
No, it is. It's just.
It's on the floor.
It's just a name, it's just a name change.
Correct.
It's just basically a name change, it's basically the same workforce development.
Well, I'll entertain motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we commit to the said program under Upper Savannah that we have been participating in for the last several years to be approved by County Council.
Got a motion, we have a second.
Second.
Got a motion in the second. All in favor, raise your right hand. Four, one, all opposed.
I'm going to have a study, because I want an actual study, it's more formal.
Thank you. Thank you for giving me this opportunity to talk with you.
Next thing on our agenda tonight, in a discussion item, is Resolution 2015 dash zero four, declaring April as fair housing month.
Chairman, I'd like to address that. This is something that's done every year, it's requiring counties or local to participate in the community development block grant program, it's actually a federal program, interestingly about State Department of Commerce, and what Lawrence County's done this month in the last several years is the most field it's left, is to work with the Water and Sewer Commission on water and sewer projects in Joanna, Lady Mill, I think it's been something across the area in years past, and this is simply a process you go through, you know, we've got to run some notices and that sort of thing. Lawrence County supports fair housing, and so pro forma thing's done every year, so April is the time this is done, and it, what it does, it sets, it makes a county eligible for some funding for areas of concern that may not be local money available for. So that's what, as far as been done this way for the last probably six or eight years.
We have a motion to declare April as fair housing month, Resolution fifteen four, dash zero four.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve Resolution 2015 dash four, as fair housing resolution.
Second. Got a motion in the second. Does anybody have any question? All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed. I saw. Next thing on our agenda is Resolution twenty fifteen dash zero five, designating the week of April twelfth through the eighteenth as Telecommunications Week. Mr. Joey Avery.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the council, it's always a pleasure to be here, it's a privilege also. The week of twelfth through eighteenth of April is Telecommunicators Week. We do observe this recognition of the non-one telecommunicators dispatchers, who are the face behind the radio, the telephone, and they are the true first responder in the emergency service wheel. And before I go any further, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to ask my staff to stand, if you would, so you can see these folks, and they do a tremendous job. I put them on the spot, they've done awesome to do that. These ladies do a tremendous job in dealing with the calls that come in from the general public for emergency services, whether it be someone's house on fire, someone's car's been stolen, shooting, whatever, they do a tremendous job, and we are proud, I am proud, for those folks to be part of the staff that I deal with, because if it wasn't for them, I wouldn't be here today, so. And we ask that you would take that resolution that is before you for approval, and that's a full recommendation on my part, to give these folks the recognition that they so deserve.
Thank you.
Okay.
Do we have a motion for designating the week of April twelfth through the eighteenth, Resolution fifteen two five, as Telecommunications Week?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Got a motion, we have a second.
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Motion in the second. Does anybody have any question? If none, raise, we'll show, vote by raising your right hand. Five, a little bit. I'd like to say, we appreciate what y'all do, though. I visited down there not long ago, and I think Sturridge did too, I was very impressed with how it's run, how you carry on business. Thanks very much. Next thing on our discussion note is Resolution fifteen, dash zero six, Resolution supporting the South Carolina Fire Council Land Management to the Lakes or the stewardship of that authority, so Mr. Dave Coggin. If Lawrence County was all in water, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, County Council, Mr. Seagulls, if y'all will bear with me, in March, Ms. Haley, she passed a resolution concerning the fire burning, and if you don't mind, I'll read this resolution. And South Carolina Governor Nikki Haley has proclaimed March 2015 Prescribed Fire Awareness Month in South Carolina. A coalition of state, federal, and non-government land management organizations, under the umbrella of the South Carolina Prescribed Burn Fire Council, requests a proclamation to raise awareness of the essential role that fire plays in both the stewardship of our natural resources and the protection of lives and property. Prescribed or controlled burning is the skilled application of fire under planned weather and fuel conditions to achieve specific forest land management objectives. Controlled burning is an ancient practice notably used by the Native Americans for crop management, insect and pest control, and hunting habitat improvement, among other purposes. The practice continues today under the direction of land managers who understand the appropriate weather conditions, fuel load, and adamant fixed conditions for conducting such burns. These carefully applied fires are an important tool to reduce wildfires, maintain wildlife habitat, and to keep the more than thirteen million acres of forest land in South Carolina healthy and productive. While prescribed burning cannot stop all wildfires, it is the best management tool available to preventing larger and more frequent outbreaks. Prescribed burning is not only the most effective economical protection against wildfires, because it reduces accumulated fuel, says Haley in her proclamation, but it is also a key tool in managing and maintaining the ecologically trans integrity of the South Carolina woodland and grass and agricultural areas and wildlife habitat. Johnny Stowe, South Carolina Department of Natural Resources Wildlife biologist and Heritage Preserve Manager and manager of the South Carolina Prescribed Fire Council, has prescribed burning is done on about a half a million acres each year in South Carolina, but at least one million acres should be burned annually in the Pemellin State. The use of prescribed fire as a land management tool has deep and ancient roots in South Carolina heritage. Since prescribed fire, fires help restore and maintain vital habitat for wildlife, including bobwhite quail and other grassland birds, wild turkish, whitetail deer, gopher, tortoises, and red cocked woodpeckers. Beside the many wildlife species that require fire-dependent habitat, many plants thrive only in regularly burned forests. Fire-maintained lands also have a special, unique beauty. The open park-like vista of properly burned lands appeals to many of us. Many landowners are reluctant to apply prescribed fire to their woodland and natural areas because they lack the skills and knowledge needed to do it safely and effectively, says T.J. Severino from Clemson Extension Associate and Chair of the South Carolina Prescribed Fire Council. Much of this land accounts for the additional acreage that shouldn't properly be managed with fire. The Prescribed Fire Council is dedicated to promoting the responsible use of prescribed fire and assisting landowners and forestry professionals. We greatly appreciate Governor Haley's help with achieving these objectives by issuing this proclamation. And I want to thank County Council for considering this, this proclamation.
I tell you, y'all, I'm one that is very thankful that we do not have to have wildfires like they have out West. Praise the Lord, we don't have what they have. They'll have a fire in right about two, three hundred hours.
Well, if you remember several years ago, if we'd have had more prescribed burning, we wouldn't have had to burn on the coast down there, Merle Beach, it destroyed a bunch of homes, and this is, this is the whole reason this is being brought back. It's something that we've gotten away from, and it's huge in the insect control of prescribed fire.
Does anybody have any questions?
Just had one this weekend in Oconomie County.
Ma'am?
They had a controlled fire this weekend in Oconomie County.
Yes, ma'am, and it's been two or three at ninety-six this past week, and I heard just a while ago, I think there were some back over towards Chester last day or two. This is the time of the year for do it, because you have rain coming out, and you know, it's not, and most of the time, you have, weather conditions play a lot. You want some moisture on the ground, but you don't want a whole lot of wind danger.
Does anybody else have a question? Mr. Coggin. Thank you, Mr. Coggin.
Thank you all.
I'll entertain a motion for our Resolution 2015, dash six, supporting the prescribed Fire Council Land Management.
I make the motion, Mr. Chairman.
Got a motion, we have a second.
Second.
All in favor, raise your right hand. Next thing on our discussion item tonight, this is something very big, that Association of Counties has asked us to assemble the state legislature. I know everybody's heard about the legislature trying to give us back all these roads around here and keep them up. We don't have the money to do it, and they will not give us the money to do it. It's not just paving roads, if you think about keeping up roads, you buying bush off, you buying tractors, you buying everything else to work on roads with, plus putting in ploa- plus putting employees and all of that, where are we gonna get the money? And we got a bunch of people down here that just don't seem to understand that. And this is just basically a resolution, is our support, that we don't want roads. It's a resolution supporting state efforts to find solutions to the funding needs for state maintenance and operated roads and bridges, without transferring the burden to local governments and imposing any action taken by the general state that through lack of state funding will lead to increased taxes on citizens of Lawrence County. I'll ask for a motion for Resolution 2015, Day 07.
Mr. Chairman, I move for approval of Resolution 2015, Oh Seven, supporting the county effort to have the state to seek resolutions for maintenance and operation of roads.
Got a motion? We have a second.
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Got a motion and second. Anybody got any schedule?
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Johnson?
Currently, we got a list of ongoing unfunded mandates. And part of the problem with these mandates is the federal, state government creates grants or programs that fund the expansion of roads and lots of other projects, but it's ultimately left to locals here in Lawrence County to keep up or pay for recurring costs or something. There's no free lunch. That's the main thing I want to get across here. The money is redistributed for people to pay taxes. Another problem is the state transportation infrastructure bank, which has diverted maintenance funds from roads to expansion projects in a few selected counties. Thirty-five counties in the state of South Carolina haven't received any of those funds. Instead, thirty-three percent of all that money has gone to Charleston alone. Ninety-five percent of those funds has gone to six counties. The state should not pay for any expansions of roads until the maintenance of all our current roads have been addressed. So I'm very glad we are projecting them putting this on to us here. The state must do what every individual, family, or business does every day, and use the current funds that it has to reprioritize spending and find creative ways to repair South Carolina roads and bridges. Something that should alarm everyone is that the total government debt, federal, state, and local, by the end of fiscal year 2015 is expected to be twenty-one point seven trillion dollars. As the amount of debt grows, we will continue to see more federal and state programs abandoned, resulting in more land maintenance. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Knight?
You know, any of our legislators that goes to Columbia every week, if they don't see all the equipment out there from the state highway, with at least two trucks, ten or twelve men, then they start watching where they're going. Because there's no way a county can buy asphalt paving machines, two trucks, three or four men, or whatever. There's just no way we can fund no such extravagant use of equipment. Orange County, I doubt we could even come up with, try to drill arms on asphalt paving machines. I don't have any idea what it does, but I'm sure the cost is black rain. And we sure can't afford all those trucks and fans standing there waiting to see what they're gonna do next. So I think anytime that they want to pile something like this off on the county, they're gonna have their eyes open. That's all I got to say, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Knight?
Do you have anything?
Mr. Haley?
This county, and like all the other counties in the state, just simply can't afford to take on the maintenance and take these residents to the county system. So I'm in full support of this resolution.
Thank you. Basically, what this does, I read it on the article. This is the way they put this thing up. They waving a banana in front of the county, trying to get the county to take the road. That's exactly what it's saying. And this is not gonna be up. The way it's written now, it's not gonna be up to the county council of each county to say yes and no, whether we want these roads or not. It's gonna be up to the county transportation to be, that it's appointed by the same people that's putting this thing up to vote, if you can understand what it's saying. It all goes back to the local government fund too, what we've been shorty at almost nine hundred thousand dollars this year in the local government fund. You pay state taxes, probably everybody in here pays state tax. I know that name. That money goes to state, where state's supposed to give us back a certain amount of money to support departments like magistrate, DSS, Celestrate. About half the departments in the county are supposed to be supported by the state. Registration and elections, all that's supposed to be supported by the state. So they're not giving us that money back, but you still paying that money in there. They want counties to turn around and raise taxes again on you to pay for those services. So you've been taxed, you will be taxed twice. You'll be taxed by the state, and then you'll be taxed by the county to pay for those services, the same services. And that's what we're up against, and it's really, I've looked at some of our budget figures, and we got a long road ahead of us for our budgets this year. But I'll entertain a motion for Resolution 15, Day 07.
I make the motion, Mr. Chairman?
Did I already make that motion? Yeah, all you have to do is stand in town.
Okay, I'll make it.
It's all right.
All in favor, raise your right hand.
Sit down again.
I got a lot of my place down. I didn't forget some of them. Back around sixty-eight years old. Next thing we got on our agenda tonight is we got two appointments to Gateway, which used to be the alcohol and drug commission. You wanna address that, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, I will. Mr. Jimmy Garrett and Mr. Kiri, Handselman, is that right? Okay. Mr. Garrett, I think, is Reverend Lawrence and, I can't remember where they were. And Miss Handselman is Reverend of the Graco area. They would be appointed to that very worthwhile commission. Garrett, I think, is Reverend of the City Lawrence, and Miss Handselman is Reverend of Dogwood Road in Graco. So the council's been requested to approve these appointments.
Do we need a motion just yet? I'll ask for a motion first for Kiri Handselman. Do we have a motion?
Jim Paybel, is that the same?
No, I'm doing the same.
All right, I move that Kiri Handselman be appointed to the Board of Gateway Counseling Center.
Got a motion? We have a second.
Second.
All in favor, raise your right hand.
Well, Mr. Chairman, one question I gotta ask. Whom's council districts are these? They didn't even fill out the petition, but they didn't, but I thought they'd know who the district was.
Lot of time, we're just glad to get somebody.
Yeah, or he could have let him know.
Garrett, I think, would be in probably Mr. Johnson's district. I'm not sure. Mr. Garrett and Miss Handselman, or the three would be there, that would be the, that would be Mr. Daniels. I'm not sure. Dogwood Road, I'm not sure. Either way, that is, I'm sure of it.
District three.
District three, okay.
We'll entertain a motion for Mr. Jimmy Garrett.
I make the motion, Mr. Chairman?
We got a motion? We have a second.
Second.
Does anybody have any question? If none, raise your right hand. It's good to have people step forward and volunteer to do these things in the county, and they don't get paid for it. We really appreciate what the state is doing with this. The next thing is Resolution 15, Day 08. Mr. Bruce Young.
Mr. Chairman, we can go ahead and address that now. I would think of a schedule to be discussed in the next session of the economic development matter prior to acts by council, but I, it was a pleasure to share it.
That's not a city right there. Well, we won't go into negotiations, but. Well, I'd like to make a session.
This will be up for debate after discussing the next session.
Is this exactly the second too?
Yes.
What about this? We're gonna go ahead and they did, it is, and then we'll go into the next session. We're gonna skip up to number eight. Orange County Orders 787. Orders from in, orders four sixty-five, providing for the use of the maximum legal presenting of local option sales tax funds for the year fifteen sixteen. And use these funds for revenue show files in Lawrence County. This does not mean that we're gonna use these funds, or maybe not use all of them, but we're gonna go ahead. You have to have three regional certificates. So I entertain a motion for Orange County Order 787.
Mr. Chairman, I move for approval of Order 788 for the purpose of starting our budget by title from.
Now, this is seven eighty-seven.
Seven eighty-seven. I'm looking right at it. I just transcribed.
I'm not counting my motion.
You're not counting them. You're disusing them.
So you're making a motion for seven eighty-seven?
Mm-hmm, seven eighty-eight, because that's what they said. It says seven eighty-eight?
Seven eighty-seven.
Seven eighty-seven. Okay, I'm sorry.
We got a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Does anybody have any question?
All I'd like to say is this hundred percent of local option sales tax is supposed to be to roll our people in Orange County's taxes back. But we keep our, get that twenty-nine percent to help us pay the debts we've run up. I would like to see over that, and the taxpayer gets right for the hundred percent instead of the county getting twenty-nine percent of it.
Listen, if you take what the state shortens, you know, there's eight hundred and twenty thousand dollars in the local option money. The state cuts about nine fifty, that's where this company, you know, trying to offset what, I think the chairman pointed out, should be rightfully owed anyway. And as he said, I think we're gonna move towards budget over the next four or six weeks to try to reduce this amount as much as possible. Right now, this is just the first step, trying to get the process started.
This is basically, Mr. Johnson?
I've got a really long list here with taxes in general. And, you know, I'm gonna move against this. As April fifteenth approaches us tomorrow, currently, people are paying, I mean, in America, are just paying over a hundred different types of taxes and fees. And I'd like to read this.
At what?
Oh, okay, thank you, sir. Number one, federal income tax, state income tax, local income tax, employee social security tax, your employer pays the other half. Employee Medicare tax, your employee pays the other half. Property taxes, road toll charges, state sales taxes, local option sales taxes, hospitality taxes, accommodation taxes, driver's license renewal fees, TV and satellite fees and taxes, federal telephone surtax, excise tax, and universal surcharge, state telephone excise tax and surcharge, telephone minimum usage and reoccurring, non-reoccurring charges taxes, gas and electric taxes, water and sewer taxes, cigarette taxes, alcohol taxes, federal gasoline tax, state gasoline tax, local gasoline tax, federal inheritance tax, state inheritance tax, gift tax, bridge toll charges, marriage license fees, hunting license fees, fishing license fees, bike license fees, dog permanent license fees, state park permanent fees, watercraft registration and licensing fees, sports stadium taxes, bike nature trail permanents, court case filing fees, retirement account early withdrawal penalties, individual health insurance mandate tax, which due to Obamacare is this year three hundred and twenty-five dollars per individual penalty, hotel stay tax, plastic surgery surcharge tax, soda and fatty food tax, air transportation tax, electronic transmission of tax return fees, passport application renewal fees, luxury and gas guzzler car taxes, new car surcharges, license plate and car ownership transfer taxes, yacht and luxury boats taxes, jewelry taxes and surcharges, state and local school tax, recreational vehicle tax, special assessment for road repairs of constructions, gun ownership permanents, kidney tax, see IRS Form eighty-six fifteen for that one, fuel gross receipts tax, waste management taxes, oil and gas assessment taxes, use taxes, IRA rollover tax withdrawal penalties, tax on non-qualified health savings account distributions, individual and small business surtaxes, see page three thirty-six of Obamacare, estimated income tax, underpayment penalties, alternative minimum tax on income, federal corporate tax, state corporate income tax, tax registration fees for new businesses, employee social security tax, employer Medicare taxes, federal unemployment taxes, state unemployment taxes, businesses registration renewal taxes, workers' compensation taxes, tax on imported slash exported goods, oil storage inspection fees, employer health insurance mandate taxes, excise taxes on charitable hospitals, see page two thousand and one, section nine thousand and seven of Obamacare, tax on innovator drug companies, that's page two thousand and ten, section nine thousand and eight of Obamacare, tax on medical device manufacturers, page twenty twenty, section nine thousand and nine of Obamacare, tax on health insurers, page twenty twenty-six, section nine thousand and ten of Obamacare, head size taxes on comprehensive health insurance plans, i.e. Cadillac plans, tax on indoor tanning services, utility user taxes, internet transaction fees, professional license fees, franchise business taxes, tourism and concessions license fees, wiring inspection fees, household employment taxes, buyer diesel fuel taxes, FDIC tax, electronic waste recycling fee, hazardous material disposal fee, food and beverage license fee, estimated income tax underpayment penalties, building construction permit, zoning permit, new construction permits, fire inspection fees, well permit taxes, sales and use taxes, seller permit, commercial driver's license fee, bank ATM transaction taxes, occupation taxes, and last but not least, the fee and lieu taxes, the fee line. That's how many taxes Americans are paying. We need to cut down on them. Thank you. Thank you.
Well, I can't talk, but. Mr. Sam?
Have any comments?
Mr. Peady?
No comment, Mr. Chairman.
One local option sales tax was put in the county and voted on, I voted against it. It had to go up three or four times. But after I saw, or seen what it did, the money is supposedly fully refunded back to the county taxpayer a hundred percent. But the county's have a right to take twenty-nine percent of it when we need to. I don't like the idea of having to do it every year, and I think in the past, we've only done it two times. Or maybe three. And I think that's a pretty good record. But all the money for this local option sales tax comes back to the taxpayer. Unless we take twenty-nine percent of it. I call for a vote. All in favor of the order, seven eighty-seven, raise your right hand. All in favor? Next thing is Orange County order seven eighty-eight, it's gonna be by Title only. There's been very little information put out on it. But I have a motion for Orange County order seven eighty-eight, that's our budget for fifteen sixteen. Be first reading by Title only.
Chairman, I make a motion to approve order number seven eighty-eight. Orange County have by twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen budget by Title only.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Like we say, this is just Title only, it's just get it in the works. Because we have a certain amount of time to get through the ordinance to the budget here. Does anybody have any comment? If none, we'll take a vote by show or right hand. All in favor? All in favor? Administrator report, Mr. Seager?
Chairman, I'm thinking, I can't count, I'm over four ears, I'm just, I'm really nuts.
So, five, fifteen minute period, a vote to comment. If you've got something you want to say, come forward and say it and try to hold it for five minutes. State your name. Nobody wants to speak for a closing, closing of the comment period? No, that's a comment to council. Mr. Peady?
No comment, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Sam? Mr. Young?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. The fourth district did not send me here to go with the flow and continue business as usual. So I think we can do better, and I would like to, you know, as we go into the budget here, I'm very excited to look at some of these options and find ways to be as efficient as we can and cut costs in Orange County. Thank you.
Mr. Knight?
Listen, it's just, I haven't got anything, Knight, either.
So we'll close with a comment for council members and all. We got executive session, two employment matters, one legal briefing, two legal briefings, one economic development matter. We have a motion, second?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we go into executive session for two employment matters, two legal briefing, and one economic development.
Do we have a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor, three, raise your right hand. We'll take five-minute recess. We're back in session, we had two employment matters, two legal briefings, and one economic development matter. We had no action taken. Has anybody else got anything to come for county?
I do.
Sam?
Mr. Chairman, are we not gonna deal with twenty fifteen oh eight resolution, economic development matter and the orders?
Okay. We got a resolution, twenty thousand, fifteen days, oh eight. I'm gonna back this up. We did, we have got something about two employment matters, resolution twenty fifteen days, oh eight. Would anybody like to make a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like us to move to approve resolution twenty fifteen oh eight regarding the economic development along with seven eighty-four, which is the first reading.
We're gonna move to second.
Okay.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Our new motion for order seven eighty-four, which is project needle.
Mr. Chairman, I make the motion for order seven eighty-four.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? The vote? I have to take my chair. Sorry about that.
That's okay.
We had a lot on the table. We had two legal briefings, no action taken, economic development matter, no action taken. I mean, two employment matters, no action taken. Anything else, Mr. Sam?
Yes, it's in reference to the failing of the cabinet council meeting. Now, is the camera still on? I feel like when we get ready to go into executive session, the camera needs to be cut off, or either when we discuss a meeting.
He cuts it out when going executive session, he cuts it down.
I just cut it all out between the two, when we come back on.
I just think it needs to be cut off.
Okay.
When we decide we're gonna go into executive session, I don't think it needs to be on for the people that's out here who's talking and anything like that, while we are going back there, I see it here in the lobby area. I just think it needs to be cut off when we come back in for executive session, it needs to be turned back on.
I was thinking, and he did cut it out, I saw where he meant, it don't show no there.
I cut it, yeah, I cut all that out. I just put our meeting, and then when we come back from the executive session, it's on. But I can turn it off.
Yeah, but the people in here talking is just picking up the conversation. And I just think that's just wrong.
I can, I can turn it off.
Does anybody else got anything? We stand, Mr. Chairman? Okay. We're gonna set up a time for a budget. I guess our budget work session is going to have to be toward the weekend. Mr. Thompson will be able to attend.
Might be, might be able to do something, maybe electronic, hold up. Do that one time, at least here.
Chairman, I will test it into, Jim and I will test it into.
Okay, he does, he does, they'll be back the third of the night, so it's gonna be hard to do that. And he, I mean, I can understand the situation. He did, I think, I think maybe the work, you know, about the end of, maybe, four or five weeks, it'll be quite hectic if it happens now. But, you know, unless you want to be Friday morning, probably, probably gonna need to be something earlier in the week, we'll, the wall will drive back some sort of ring, maybe a telephone or something, a telephone.
Can you get it promoted in?
Only work sessions are rarely, there aren't any, I mean, council sites, there won't be reading on budget. We'll register, we, you know, and have something, I want something made, and we'll serve it sometime later.
Yeah, I want to make here, or here, straight. Make here, you get to vote.
Here will be fine. I tell you, we might be able to, maybe add a table down here, everybody look at each other. You know, rather than just kind of stretch it out, I think we got here, it's kind of hard to see here. We'll do it here, if we need to do it.
I need to check my calendar for it, if that's okay.
Can we set some tentative, can you let us know if we can do that?
I'll try, I'll try, yes.
Are you, just to give a, you know?
We're gonna try to make it when Mr. Thompson is in town.
I don't think we can do that. That's what we're talking about, the telephone.
Okay, yeah, okay, so. What about next, Wednesday afternoon?
Wednesday, that's Baptist.
Or next Tuesday afternoon?
Tuesday afternoon. Two, two.
Tuesday a bad day?
Two, bad day for me, two day back here.
Pretty much, it's a bad day. Actually, if Wednesday afternoon works, but I can't go long, because I have to church, I said.
That's Baptist, we're making that.
I know, I'm Baptist. What about Thursday?
Nine.
It'll be twenty-third, third, I'll be right. No?
Yeah, I'll be right, yeah.
Twenty-third. Five block?
Yeah. I don't say five block, I'm saying thirty, we have a dollar selection. You don't beat hard crack in my time, or everybody.
Oh, you're right. And it is just first time approval, but there'll be plenty more, sure. We do have a book here that we'll provide to you on the way out. Let me just say, in general terms, there is a deficit that we get into most of this time every year. There are company positions included, there's a salary group included, which is basically variable, we've got a whole tour. I think we'll get into the whole detail last, after we have the answer, we'll head it. It's gotta be on three, we're gonna close here, and it's gotta be done by July first, by that, 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 that. But now, I do look, Chairman, all I got.
Nothing else, Mr. Sam?